Okay, this is the Gloucester School Committee. We are going to continue our meeting and open session. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. I ask that you stand and join me for the school.
A allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in whose rule we live, in justice for all.
Okay, first, oral communications. If there's anybody who would like to address the committee for three minutes, you can press star nine to request to speak or raise your hand button on your device. And then we will recognize you to speak and you may just state your name and address for the record. If there's anybody who would like to speak. Okay, seeing none. Next is recognitions. Does anybody have any recognitions? Lauren?
I want to recognize the parents of the Beeman Memorial Military School for putting together the holiday storm, which began today, which is a beloved theme and tradition, which takes an enormous amount of work. And staff, our teacher Anne Pearson gave us a room for days and days. And everyone really put together, put together a really amazing experience for students of Beeman.
I'd like to recognize the inductees into the National Art Honor Society. But I think it was maybe the first time in history of Gloucester. I think I counted them up as 32 students that were inducted and certainly a new appreciation of arts and the students that are involved in that is very interesting to see.
Thanks.
I want to recognize West Parish School and staff for putting on the Polar Express movie night. It was a blast. I had my kids attend and Tux Candy provided candy canes for sale to support the event as well. And there's pizza for sale. Kids had a blast after hours running around the school. They came over to in their pajamas. It was awesome.
Melissa, I just quickly want to recognize, I'm sure we all saw it on Facebook, the vocational technical kids getting out into the new school. It's exciting to see the kids in our programs getting offsite. So hopefully there's more of that to come in the future. And I know they were at the Skills USA building, something about a grant that I'm sure we'll hear about at some point. But who knows to the new director that we haven't met yet and what's going on because it seems like there's a lot of good going on. And I can't wait to hear directly from her at some point at a future meeting.
Very soon.
Oh, Sam?
I would just like to recognize Amy Cam and the Mental Health Advisory Committee and the parents who all sort of attended the Resource Fair and the Lynn Lyons presentation on kids anxiety. It was very, very informative. It's not easy for parents to sort of admit when your kid needs help. And there was a lot of parents in attendance. So I appreciate everyone showing up. I appreciate the hard work of Amy Cam and her team.
I just want to recognize PTO over at Gloucester School last night. They had their holiday book read. And I was happy to read. It was very embarrassed when a bunch of kids asked for my autograph. I was like, that's not that important. But anyway, it was a good time and thank you, everybody, for the time you took together.
That's not good going on in our stills life.
Yeah, it's a good show.
I guess I'll take the opportunity to mention that Gloucester High School has a holiday concert this coming Friday here at Gloucester High School. So if anybody is so inclined to come with the kids and join all the bands. We do not have anybody from the Gloucester High School Student Advisory Council because of acting tonight, which is great for Gloucester High School. Next is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any items they would like to remove? I moved it to the consent agenda. Roll call opening.
Chairperson Flanders?
Yes, Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Menio?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yeah.
Mayn Burger?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Yes. Next, I am a goodness. We have some guests with us tonight with a presentation from the YMCA and the update on collaborations with Gloucester Public Schools we have with the executive director, Arina McWilliam-Lopez. Welcome.
Thank you.
You can introduce your colleagues.
And I've also brought Heather Bedrow, who is our new director of school age programs.
Showing some slides over here while I catch up. It's a pleasure to have Arina and Heather here. And you can hear much more about what the Y has been doing with the facility, but also the programming their ongoing partnership with us with after-school course, which is longstanding. Also, some of the pieces in summertime and also other areas they're developing. So but Arina and Y, if you've been forward to came here, it's great partners. Now we're also working together on supporting Yale families with other partner organizations across the city. So great to have you, both Heather and Arina.
Thank you. So I'll just start out just with a few things about myself. I went to Gloucester High School and I'm also a parent of a Plum Coop student. So I spent about a decade away in California, Silicon Valley area. And I just couldn't shake off Gloucester. I think a lot of people have that problem. Or maybe it's not a problem, it's an opportunity. So I recently came back about four years ago. And I've had a career focused on social impact in higher education. And so I feel like there's a lot of synergy in the work that I'm doing now with the YMCA. I also feel like, and I think we all know this, that the keeping and caring of Gloucesters families and children is something that the Y is very much doing and something that the school systems are really doing. So a lot of the challenges and situations that we all face, we're facing them with the same families and there are very similar challenges. So I'm really focused just as a new executive director to really develop a stronger sense of connection between our school systems and the YMCA. So just, I just had a, just a quick high level agenda because I know we don't have much time. And I really just wanted to focus on the culture shift at the Y that's happening. And I think it's happening everywhere, too. The areas of partnership, kind of pointing out the areas that I think a lot of us aren't aware, but just making sure that, you know, everyone's aware and thinking of it in the same way that we are. And then the emerging areas of priority, which I think are also emerging areas of potential partnership. So the next slide, I'm showing this building because this is the original K-Ban YMCA. And right now, it's, it's, it's basically the demolition is happening. It's going to be taken down. It's going to be turned into a senior affordable housing unit. But it represents something, right? It represents something residual that I see in the culture currently at the new Glentee McLeod location. And there's this tension between what was before and what is now. And so we've grown 200%. So inside of this Y, there was less than 200 or less than 2,000 individual members. Now we have almost 10,000 individual members. Where we have around almost 5,000 units, which includes families or roommates or whatever. So that's a huge shift. And it's also a building that looks and feels like it could be a private boutique workout facility. So there's new expectations. And again, I think what we're seeing is this sort of, sometimes it feels like a collision of this private gym space with also the DNA of what a Y is. The Y is a place for everybody. So we're really sorting that out, I think, as a team. And then, of course, I'm coming in as a new executive since July. So we've just done a lot of culture focused work and really articulating and figuring out what our focus is and who we are and how we treat each other based on our mission. So I wanted to point that out. And then the common thread, just recently went to a Massachusetts Alliance for YMCA's. And one of the coaches there was a longtime executive in various YMCA's said something that I think really resonates with everyone here, that caring for humans is the most strategic work we can do right now in the Y. So I think about that a lot in terms of how we approach things. And then the next area I wanted to focus on is partnerships. So our school age programs have been running for a long time with Gloucester schools. Every school site has an after-school care program. We also run a program during school breaks. Heather recently took over and Heather has been working with us for over a decade. So most recently, she has been, Heather, talk a little bit more about it. I don't mean to talk over you, but has been an inclusion specialist, which has been one of our most important enrichment parts of after-school care. We have inclusion specialists and we have additional people that come in and help the kids do homework. So there's a lot that goes on that I think, I'm a parent of a child in school age care. And I really wasn't even aware before really seeing the backend of all that we do, of the, just the intentionality that goes into, you know, a licensed program. So it's been really meaningful. I think to Lena, we've, we've been able to have a number of conversations and connections through, we, we have a lot of data about behavior and things that are going on with families. And so it's really important that we're able to obviously not share private information, but be able to share really important information about how to support certain kids and families. So I think that's key. And then there's an emergent partnership happening with Gloucester preschool pathways and the Y to really address the issue of childcare gaps. And particularly gaps that Pathways is facing and Gloucester preschool is facing. And so again, those same inclusion specialists that work with our after-school programs also work with our early learning center students. And then the summer literacy program has been another way that we've been partnering. And I also wanted to mention Countdown to Kindergarten. We don't really have a formal way that we partner, but Christine Castle was just at the Y, I think, yesterday handing out information to our early learning center families. And it just seemed like, of course, we should be doing more of this. And also in our main lobby area, we have lots of families coming in every day and dropping their kids off at the kids club. And Countdown to Kindergarten was one of the most meaningful things that our family did just to get our son excited about school. So I just feel like that's one example of just an easy way that we can just connect, connect our two entities together. And so I also wanted to just show the next slide. We have, that just gives you a sense of the enrollment at the different schools. I thought what was interesting and not to bring up an issue that I'm sure is challenging, but the redistricting of schools. We see a correlation, right, in how some of the inequality in terms of certain families going to certain schools. We see that in terms of some of the behaviors that are coming up. And so it was interesting when I saw that map then that you shared earlier in the fall. I, I do think that, that at the end of the day, that's a really important effort to think about because we do see a correlation and increase in behaviors in certain schools versus others. And, and obviously, we would want to see a more equitable experience for every school, every child in every school. So those are our numbers right now. We, in this past year, increased our licensing capacity. And we faced, I think, probably similar staffing issues that schools have faced. We've had a new partnership this year. I think it started last year. We have noon time monitors that are working at your schools and they're from the Y. And that's been really helpful to us to be able to retain staff. Because now we can hire staff full time where we have them coming at noon and then we have them working until six. That's been a really helpful way that we've been able to develop our staff and just have a stronger team. So one more thing I wanted to mention is another area that isn't necessarily a formal partnership, but it's something that's emerging and something that we are really interested in is the mental health connection. So I went to the Lynn Lyons presentation last week, which I thought was excellent and really validating in terms of a lot of the ways that we're looking at how to support anxiety. And we recently raised at an association level, a significant amount of funding to train all of our staff in mental health, health first aid and integrate mental health and cultural emotional skill building in the way we train our staff and then infuse that into all of our programming. So with that, no cause there and just letting Heather just say a few things about, I think you've been really in the trenches. You've worked for the Y for 10 years.
Yeah.
So you've really been in the trenches, particularly of all the needs of inclusion and then as the director.
Yeah, so I started working at the Y as a, when I was a Gloucester High School student, part-time, doing Friday night fun. I've worked my way up. I've had, I think, almost every job at the Y, except for probably Arina's. But just watching, you know, Y kids, they grow up and then they become our staff. And then to see them come back into the schools as teachers or to hire them at 16 is, is crazy. And it's, it's really rewarding. It's an amazing field to be in. And now to be the head of the after-school program and camp and being really a part of this is awesome opportunity. I hope to continue the partnership.
Yeah, just, can you just explain what license capacity means and why some of the numbers are higher than enrolled?
So, so we are through EEC. So it means license capacity is how many children we can have each day. So not every child goes every day. So you can have one child that goes Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and one kid that goes Tuesday, Thursday. And so they count obviously separately. But each day they'll, we'll only have up to 39.
I think those are actually the, the license capacity might be the numbers.
No, the, sorry, the license, so that's how many we can have each day? So we might have a total, like more kids enrolled.
Depending on what days they.
Yeah, so total, yeah, 26. Yeah. But there might be, you know, for Plum Coop, there's 32 different children that attend throughout the week. So.
Yeah. Excellent presentation. I appreciate it. And as a member at the Y, I appreciate the caring for humans aspect of the whole thing. And I'm assuming it's a holistic approach to that. I mean, it's this physical aspect. So I'm impressed by that. One of the, one of the things that I think is always a concern with the new Y is, A, there's a tremendous amount of people that utilize it, but B, the services available to our teenage age group. And, you know, if you go over there, sometimes there's a lot of, it's, it's, I don't want to say it's a miss, miss, misserviced group, but there's just a lot of teenagers over there. It's kind of a teenage hangout. And what's the, what's the short-term snapshot picture of that? And the other thing I was thinking is, is the more we integrate with the YMCA, the more we kind of come closer to the YMCA. I'm wondering if it's almost a good idea for us to consider a liaison to the YMCA like we have with the Gloucesters, Gloucester Athletic Association or different organizations. I mean, maybe we do. Maybe we already have a liaison with the YMCA from the school committee to the Y.
I don't think we have.
We don't. Might, might be worth considering.
Thank you.
More to the point is the teenage question over there.
Yes, the teenage question. This is definitely something I've been spending a lot of time trying to figure out. Because there's a number of different pockets. So we have three, if you could believe it, we have three full-time staff in our gym. Kind of a combination of gym monitors and then teen directors. And so they, they facilitate just more organized games, facilitating how teens are interacting inside the building. And I know that there's sometimes outside the building, it kind of bleeds out and there's issues there. Particularly with, we used to have a cafe that was open at night. And I think that mitigated teens running over to Starbucks and grabbing food. So we are in this process of trying to figure out what's our strategy. The other part of it is there's teens that want to come and use the gym to work out upstairs. They want to go in the basketball area. And then I think there's this sort of untapped area of teens that want to do something in the community, right? Either volunteering, workforce development type thing. So one thing that I really want to focus on is creating a workforce development grant. The Y is a first employer for a lot of people in our community. And I feel like that bridge between becoming an employee in the workforce and being a young person and figuring out like how they could contribute to their community. I want to create a more formalized structured program for that because we do have, I'm a parent. I personally don't feel passionate about seeing a bunch of teams playing video games in our boardroom, but it's what they want to do. So I've been trying to figure out how do we create something a little more structured that they're going to want to come to. So it's, it is a challenge. And a liaison or someone that is like a teen whisperer, I would love to talk to. David Tucker is our teen director. But teens are dynamic. We need to figure out different facets of how we support teens in our building.
And certainly not being accusatory in any way. Great, great work over there. Resources that you have. And that's the template right there for coming up through the Gloucester school system, getting it drawn to the Y, turning that into a career. So very impressive.
I'm there.
Yeah. I don't recall when we met, if we talked about the clean team. But we had, we had just started the discussion earlier in the year, maybe before you got here. But by the time we were ready to pull the trigger, it was kind of too late. But I'd like to make sure we can get the wheels in motion for next year. There's, there's a lot of stuff we could utilize, a group of teams to help downtown and elsewhere.
Yeah, that would be great. I've, I've been looking at other successful programs that otherwise. I mean, Seattle Y has an herb core, a teen earth core. So I think that's probably similar. The language is different, but there's a lot of models that are proven to be successful. So I love hearing that. That's great.
Yeah, we should probably in the early, in the new year, just sit down again and plan ahead for spring and summer.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Just a thing about teenagers. I'm just wondering, have you tried to reach out to the teenagers? Maybe give them a survey, like activities they might want to do to try to like divert them from video games? You know, like for some reason, I'm, I'm thinking about like a songwriting workshop. I don't know if there's any musicians involved. I, I mean, I enjoy.
I'm happy they're doing video games physically together.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, like I said.
Same table.
Yeah, I'm not totally against video games. I mean, there's, there's a big difference between like, say, like gaming online with complete strangers or gaming online with your friends or gaming in the same room. I mean, it gets more intimate. But, you know, if you're looking for diversions, maybe the kids have some ideas that you might want to support.
Yeah, I, and this is, I think, to me, it's, it's like somewhere in the middle and I could be way off. I could be like too old and not getting it. But I feel like TikTok dancing, you know, all those, the dance routines. I was, that's.
That's physical.
Why I could.
Physical.
Yeah.
Jump roping. I've been seeing a lot of things on like shorts, like it's like jumper roping craze. It is like a dance. It's amazing.
Yeah.
It somehow ended up in my beat. I'm like, that is, I don't think I've ever jumped rope in my life, but.
Yeah, we're definitely open to stuff like that. We just have to find the folks that know. I mean, probably the teens themselves. That could be a great job.
First of all, a couple things. One thing I like about the Y is they let anybody in. Case in point, I was there for a meeting, meeting with you and our elders. And someone, Mr. Melvin's family alerted me to the fact that he was upstairs working out. Not go visit him, which I don't believe in me. But in all seriousness, um, thank you, the Y. Thank you, Heather. I'm glad you're on. It just, as someone said, what a great testament to the, you know, to have you folks graduating and attendees of Gloucester High and then come back and contribute to the community, but also contribute to the city students as well. So thank you so much for the vision.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
As a matter of side, I did the same thing. I just keep moving back from California myself because I couldn't stay. It's always in my mind that I would come back.
Yeah, it's hard. Should we stay?
No, you are welcome.
Same business is superintendent's report, which.
Yeah, so I gave a quick update and, and from my point of view, a lot of that was covered already with your recognitions, but I will add a few things. Screen going there. I had a little more detail on these photos. So just again, it is winter conference season and East Gloucester and Plum Coop have gone. West Parish is involved already with their Polar Express night and upcoming next, next week. Veterans is the end of this week. O'Malley is next week. High School's this week. So anyway, just now to say this, it is such a nice, I was able to attend East Gloucesters also and most of the others, coming together of family and community and kids around your song. And so, for our music teachers are just incredible. I mean, these kids sing out loud, which still amazes me. Okay. Probably because I'm never singing out loud. But so first of all, the great, great singing, but also the smiles, the, the cat calls. I heard one parent scream out to their fifth grade daughter from way in the back at East Gloucester, right? I think it was, go, go Ellie, okay? Has that daughter moved into, maybe they might not want to do that anymore. Anyway, but, but just coming together in smiles and laughs. And also it's still a reminder that that hasn't been the comment, you know? But just the cheer and the warmth is just fantastic. It's a great part of this time of the year. Just highlighting some things, the gender equity and STEM program or at the high school is, has had many false starts over the years or a number of false starts, not for GF's lack of trying and our lack of trying. But it's really, for example, heading up and ongoing support of GF and ongoing tenacity of Roseanne and others. It's really catching hold. And here's an example of a field trip to Salem State University, a geology lab. If you're not knowing what they're doing, they'll let on left-hand side. They're clearly looking Microsoft on the right-hand side. But a few things, the club's open to all GHS students. It's a highlight women in STEM fields. And also introducing students to career opportunities in these fields that are exposed by. 17 students visited Salem State University and they visited a geology lab and learned from Dr. Sarah Mann about how she got involved in the world of geology and science. She also discussed with them different types of, you know, things like volcanoes and forensic geology. Particularly I've been just right now, if you're paying attention to anything that's going on at Y, where, you know, some of the sort of, you know, record or just sort of incredible lava flows from there. But so it's very, very relevant as well. And then another effort they did last month was meeting Kelly Branca Leoni, who's a Gloucester High graduate again. Now it's engineering company locally. And, and she talked to students about the work she does and engineering project. Now she got involved in it and helped them with a funny engineering project. So it's just, it's really launching and they have upcoming visits to Museum of Science and Varian. And last year in smaller groups, much smaller, but it wasn't as big. Is Oakdale Alliance and the Mass Area Station, GMGI. So just really pleased with the effort to really help girls especially and others who support them broadly in STEM, STEM fields. As many folks mentioned, yes, the CVT program, got a skills grant from the state. And there were four, there were Brendan Wassick was there on the right with Governor Baker, was there at the announcement at Essex Tech yesterday. And then our students on the left who represented Gloucester High, Sam Rodriguez and Chase Sargent, both are in the advanced manufacturing program. Michael Toppin is in carpentry and Karen Whitney is electrical. And that's the, you approved a grant from GF, I think, two weeks ago, support the compressors in CVT. And that in money for our operating budget was a matching grant that enabled us to then apply for and now receive the skills grant from the state. So great work to Brendan Wasslick. Bringing in really important resources to help our programs function and our machinery function. So there's more details about it. $170,000 grant. Technology powers our tools, machines and automotive and advancement, manufacturing, carpentry. So and that's been quite old. Um, the technology powers are tools, machines and automotive and advancement, manufacturing, carpentry, so um, and that being quite old. Um, and so just anyway, that, that was a great announcement and they announced a number of different things around career tech education um yesterday there at Essex Tech. So, and as um, I think it was Melissa mentioned, our um electrical tech students from the high school were throwing new building. And I believe we'll, we'll have other um carpentry students i- in the future as well. One thing that's enabling um. More, and, and also we have um auto students visiting Lion Wa, which has been um. You know, starting, restarted last year and for regular occurrence and um part of what's made this possible is we're able to. Fix a van, uh, school van, um, and get it uh re-registered and so we're much, it's much easier now to transport. Especially the, the CBT students to and others to programs like this that are all site. Uh, then Lions folks mentioned that, a couple of photos there. It was great to see in the very beginning, very front of the auditorium near where I'm, and school members. Were sitting, most everyone was there, which is great. Um, the mental health ambassadors sort of sitting in a, a classic high school clump together. Uh, supporting each other and listening tentatively, telling Lions message. I have used, she shared a number of techniques. One of them was how to help your child go back to, get to sleep if they're sort of spinning with some, some worries. I've applied that same technique and it's been proving very useful in fact.
It's interesting.
And then by the way, this bit wasn't clear, applying on myself, on my kids. Um, and then as um, I think it was Bill mentioned, National Honor Society induction and here are the names, the students and photos of them. Uh, but a great turnout from where I understand I was able to go, but just really pleased to um that Jessica Kirk and others and. We're able to launch this, um, Emily Hardy. And others, uh, which is just a great way to acknowledge and raise the importance of, of ours in our, in our system. You know, we, we, we honor them, we recognize them, but also this sort of another level of making sure folks are, this is a way to stand out. Beeman Elementary School playground is, is under construction, installation. He's comfortable there. Um, and that's underway now. I'll share the timeline there. How many times, that timeline has it had to been updated? Really for, related to weather, which uh delayed the installer's previous engagement. That delayed them getting started. Uh, so we, we expected them to start December fifth installing. They started to look, um. Uh, started, started December eighth instead. That is our, our initial timeline, original timeline, which was shared with the committee and the Beeman. Um, community was to have folks playing on the playground November nineteenth. Um, that will not happen. Um, we'll be finishing the installation. Uh, in, um, you know, right about the time that school ends your breaks for December, for December break. They will complete it on December break and at this point we anticipate the school children will be on the playground for their current December break and entering January third.
Like the bottom right cell.
School total, yes, they're in the small play on, on, and school on, I recessed on the playground, yes. Thanks Gary Fresh. It's humor. Um, questions? Yeah.
So I have a question about that. So um, I've seen it. It's been very exciting to see the things starting to go live, see the trucks sitting there. Um, uh, and I was also told that sort of, we're just, we're, this is all assuming there's no increase.
Well, um, so they're putting in footings this week and uh risk varies and very regular type to them and so. They, this was, you know, checked again on the schedule, this is scheduled from today, so they're not expecting that to, to delay things. Um, I am watching temperature. I am very concerned about that temperature, but again, as of today, they told us that this is the schedule they expect. Um, yes, things can change and I, I assured that, uh, you know, both the principal Julie and the ETO leaders. That um, I'm, I'm ready to return to them if something changes. I mean, they know that, that if they have any questions, it's better to get directed at me and.
So your footings though, the things that need to go into the ground are in?
They're installing, I don't think they're all in, but they're again, um, they're.
All the equipment's there, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the equipment came in early, which was early on, we expected, we expected they would deliver it December first. Um, it looked, what it looked like a lag wasn't a lag in terms of um, uh, Greenwich and company, they uh. Um, just after uh the Thanksgiving break, they a- actually set up the site, uncleared it and, and, and leveled it sooner. Quickly, more quickly than, than we had, then, then it looked like things were not happening for a few days in that week before December fifth. Um, and then that's when we find out, found out that installer were being delayed by their previous project because of weather. And that's when we started to, had, started to have to adjust the schedule. Yeah, it looked like nothing was happening, but things had already been set up for installation and we're just waiting for that to happen. I know folks are impatient for it to happen, folks have been waiting for a long time, but um.
It's happening.
It is happening right now and, and so. Um, and then the last piece was something I was able to, uh, invited to attend yesterday at the Museum of Science. Um, MASS, the Mass Search Schools attendants and uh business, and business leaders convened, convened at the Museum of Science. To look at education, the future work. Um, so you can see some, you know, rule representative there about ten superintendents and folks from. Various um, you know, think tanks, uh, mass life, you know, science center, um, Kinko Bioworks, um. And then also Crystal Mya Squibs and a few, and a number of others. Um, the engine, this is very interesting uh work that we were doing yesterday and the key takeaway is that I, what I took away actually were that. Um, the work we're doing in the Gloucester schools are very much on the right track in this area. What people are thinking about and you know, these sort of leaders in the field, think tanks, universities, employers, you know, cutting edge employers. Um, what they're talking more and more about is one, the importance of strengthening CBT programs. And broadening that and deepening it, um, which of course, as you know, we're involved in doing that here, um, including adding a new program. Um, but also the notion that um, to push beyond just the notion that four-year college is the one answer towards career or the one path into its career. You've heard me say, talk about this and in our plan for ongoing improvement, we're also pushing on it as well. Um, and what they talked quite a bit about is that, and by two things, one, we see, they see more and more corporate and technology um businesses. Over having jobs available that are not for folks who are a four-year college degree. Those re- uh recently IBM is now fifty percent of the new jobs they're posting are not, do not require a college degree. But they do require a diploma and some training and certi- certification. So a perfect example that we've actually, I raised some folks yesterday is, you know, grabbing from. Uh, Gloucester High and then doing the GMGI Biotech Academy. That's sort of train, that's a four-month training process, but it, it sets uh those kids up. Who I hope are all, will always be graduates of our school, um, to enter the workforce well-trained. Um, uh, real skills that people are looking for. But those sorts of things, apprenticeships, which were, you know, developed more partnerships in a, in our school, but that's in trades, but also white collar um businesses. Um, and um technical and technical positions as well, and so they really see that um. Is a, uh, not a shift, but as they said, you know, the notion that there's one door, the four-year college door. Towards career, we're really moving well beyond that now. Um, and then I think we're continuing to work and we'll get better at preparing our, our students, our graduates. To know what's their next step after high school and having your own, not only exploration towards that, but real plans towards, towards that. I think that fits quite well. I mean, the last piece here, quite well with, with the intention here. The last piece we talked about about, never seems to go away. Um, and now we're calling essential skills apparently are the collaboration, problem-solving, communication skills that are first and foremost in the, in the Gloucester High School's, you know. Um, student mission really, that's what we're, what we're aiming to do, develop those skills. Um, and then we also consider them the social, emotional skills that we're developing our curriculum and that's K through twelve to. Make sure kids know how to collaborate, know how to work together, know how to listen, know how to give feedback and um, the priority to continue to say that. Um, those are the skills that differentiate people. Um, they have equal technical skills, but those who have these, these essential skills, which we all sort of live and do all day in our lives. Probably differentiate or they want kids who had that practical experience.
This is sort of like a comment slash question. So last week I was sort of doing like a, you know, deep dive and. You know, the state does a lot of emphasis on the percentage of students that go where. And Gloucesters as well, in comparison to other communities. Coming from here, I can sort of look at that and take it with a grain of salt, knowing that a lot of people. Leave this school and go right to work. And there's like, there's some options like straight to work, apprenticeships, but those are also pretty low. And so there's a huge percentage of people that we're just not capturing. And so until the state sort of catches up with this idea that over fifty percent of the jobs posted don't need a college degree. What can we do as a, as a district to really start to showcase? How many of those students are leaving here and going into some of those?
So we definitely do a better job of showcasing it, you know, the limited, what, what we do, which is very limited right now, is to present a school committee and try to get that on social media, right? So, um, a couple of things, one is um, you have to be more and more communicating about that, telling the stories. And also we have to also improve the work we do on getting kids so they have sort of a clear choice after. I mean, a deliberate choice they're making after, after high school graduation, because, because not all are, you know, and then of course that's documenting as well. But that does begin with eighth grade, transition up to ninth grade and start talking about it there, you know. Saying things like, your job in high school is to figure out something you really enjoy, love doing, have a passion for. And identify what your next path about that thing is for um after high school and make sure they're actually doing that very deliberately. We're doing it deliberately with them, but that is, is communications outreach. Another piece later, this group. One of the next steps was for this group to organize and convene and create a real um push. For getting the state on board this approach, because there are very powerful business interests um in the or, in organization. That's quite an influence that does things like raise the um requirement for MCAST during the pandemic. You know, and that is the, those are the groups that have had further, had more sway at the state level. And the folks here in this group were like, um, we actually need a counter argument to that. So that's a, that's on the macro level in some sense, but it's, it's, but that, it's all those pieces.
It's absolutely macro level question, right?
Yeah, yeah.
They're really, you know, this is the way that the world's going.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so there was, there was real talk about, and a real interest, because when um couples were asked to spoke up about that. There's really just from that, from that, from the group there of, oh, understanding that was a real issue, not like knowing that had to. And with a light bulb going on, a real interest in, okay, let's do something about that. So, yeah, it's beginning, but, but that's the type of work we staff.
So, um, that. The way Desi reports things like graduation going on to two core year. Totally ignores the fact that we are comprehensive high school, so.
It's a very diverse community.
So, the expecta- you know, people look at data and they don't know that. Kids coming out of our school have multiple paths. And so I think what sometimes gets looked at as negative is actually a positive. So is anybody discussing? How Desi should start reframing some of what they put out as data being indicative of a school's quality. Or um success with graduates from the school, because it just does a total disservice to our kids who are gaining great school. Great skills and moving on to great, great careers.
Is it, I, I don't know here, so you know, who's, who's, who's pushing on Desi? I think groups like this have to push on Desi, okay? Uh, that's a tricky piece. Another thing is, we do have change in the governor's office. You know, and so, you know, what attention will people get for Hillary and her, Governor Hillary's? Um, you know, education advisors, leadership, you know, focus on this sort of thing. It's, it's a real opportunity there. Um, I think the other piece is, um, the uh. There's also a push on career tech and expanding it, you know, not only at the high school level, but also at the, the sort of college, pre-college level. That speaks to me that there's a disconnect between pushing that, you are essentially acknowledging that there's other pathways, right? Um, and there's a disconnect there between um that push and the reporting. Uh, from, you know, K through twelve or high school, right? So, um, there doesn't be a disconnect here. I, I don't know how they reconcile the disconnect. But I think it will take efforts such as, you know, just, you know, this purging effort, others to, to really get attention on it. That's a, it's a, it's a big, it's a big effort, honestly.
You know, I'm just thinking in my mind here, it's sort of a rhetorical question, it's just statements like, how? How much is like the Department of Education, that, I'm making, you know, Jesse, how much? Are they invested in the idea that kids should be going to, you know, college, knowing that we do have public college? Are they? Concerned about feeling the like, like, you know.
Yeah, so is it more higher education want to really fill the, the.
Right. I mean, I don't. Rather than let people go out into the workforce and skip higher education. Yeah, like it's special interest they have in, in pushing that agenda. Like, you don't have to answer that question. I don't know. I'm only questions.
I, I'm not a. An expert on knowledge about higher ed.
Yeah.
So I do other things, uh, but I, yeah, I don't know, but it's an interesting question. So, any other further question on that? The last piece is, um, you may be wondering why I'm throwing a blank secret snowflake board, okay? Um, this is at the preschool and it's an indicator of just all the work that our families. But general staff in our schools do to help folks during this holiday season. This is one example at the preschool where um, um, just a few staff members. Uh, identified need for working families for, for gifts, for presents, for needs, for, you know, for things during this, for the season. They put up a lot of snowplagues and keep putting up snowplagues and have um, uh, identified needs for families. And people, staff members keep on taking those snowplagues down and getting those, uh, getting those gifts and wrapping them and preparing them for our families on holiday. That's just one school. Um, you know, uh, or really gave a Beeman example, but in every one of our schools, our PTOs and parents, but also especially our staff. They want to have our staff, effort, efforts to support families in need, sort of support, support them with outreach. Particularly this time of year when they're much more difficult on so many levels. Um, and just really, that care and concern just comes through again and again from our staff members. I just wanted to. Take this moment to have a empty secret snowflake, um, uh, bulletin board to just acknowledge. Our staff and how much they care and how much they support, how much they help out of their own pockets and, and so many ways, um, just really help.
I also don't want to detract from that message, because that's a great, that's awesome. All that we do for our, our families. Um, I also know that the. Um, Together Gloucester Giving Elks is providing help to one hundred families tomorrow. Um, so that's, you know, another community effort that really acknowledges that. Family have, have needs, whether, um, whether it's people coming from a southern climate, you know, doesn't really quite know how to. Approach winter like, oh no, it's cold out. Um, anyway, so great message to celebrate this.
And the preschool is also partnered with um, uh, Gloucester Gather and then on, on, on someone's work as well. So, yeah, it's, it's a really, uh, I really appreciate that about the folks in City Air Staff.
Thank you for making us aware of it. That's, that's very cool.
And that's all you, that's kids, right? That's kids doing food bank stuff, you know, and, and, and the open door. It just goes on and on, so to create that thinking. Alright, moving on to, uh. Yeah. I'll run slides and pass grow and others and our guests.
Alright, so the attendance report this year, we talked about every day matters and everybody belongs. So we'll start with kind of reviewing the timeline of, you're well aware of the process of changing the policy. So the policy changed, it was effective July one. Um, then we got to work about oper- operationalizing the policy, putting, um, writing the handbooks. Try to make, creating attendance teams and learning, um, Kinko is a, is a technology that we're using and getting better and better at it. As Kinko is involving, evolving better and better as well. And now we are. In the need to communicate and implement our new policy. Um, and communicate doesn't mean just this presentation. We need to continuously communicate this new policy to families so that they know we're here to support them. Um, so the terminology change, um, present is present, you're here or you're not, right? And nor you're absent is the next one. Um, the only other, there's not excused absence or anything else. The only other qualification is. Um, absence with exceptional circumstances. So this is, they're still considered absent according to the state. But there are five. Absences that they can go to, say the basketball game at night, if they're playing. They can go to the holiday concert. Because typically if you are out sick, you are not going to a holiday concert at night. You are not doing any after-school activities. However, if it's in a religious observance, if you have a legal appointment. Um, bereavement of an immediate family member, a severe medical condition requiring a hospital care. And then the next one, if you click again, is a college visit. Those one are the only exceptions that if you are absent, you may do after-school.
Well, so, yeah, so, um, raiment of immediate family member, is that our policy or is that dictated by a statute or state regulation? Um, that's our policy. I was just wondering what the flexibility would be if it was like a household member that may not be in the immediate family that really has an impact on a child. Like, is that flexibility there? You don't need to have it written, it's just.
Right, that's a principal description, but those are the guidelines for this. Okay? Um, and students are always responsible for making this work. Um, the real change and shift of our new policy is that we are being proactive instead of reactive. We are trying to support families and um catch students that are on a track to chronically absent sooner. So our old policy would have, we would wait till a student had five absences and then send a letter, and then wait till they had ten and send another one. Now we're looking more at percentages, whereas if you miss the first three days of of four days of school, that's a high percentage. We're going to reach out sooner, right? We want to try to um connect with families um as soon as we can, as soon as you're starting to see a trend of go becoming chronically absent and building that relationship and support instead of penalizing if we help that family reengage with school. Um, and this, I'm not going to go through all of it, but along with our MTSS for anything, for literacy or math, we have one for attendance. So we have our whole group supports and we have some guests here, they're going to talk about the whole group supports that they do at their individual le- levels. Um, and then with that, so that would be that tier one, what we're offering to all students to support to come to school. And then when we have need in our attendance teams, um, and we find students that are at risk, we bump into a level two support where we might have additional reach outreach in connection with the family. And then again, our tier three are are most concerning or at-risk students, and we, yes, Laura? I just want to, would you just for the MTSS, if you could just. Yeah, multiple tier systems of support. So tier one is core for everyone. Tier uh tier two is if somebody's having, so if he's reading, if they have slightly reading challenges, we might give an intervention. If they're having attendance challenges, we might have the adjustment counselor check in once a week with the family. We we might um have the nurse follow up for whatever reason. Um, a tier three is somebody has a more severe level. And um then we might be getting the school resource officer involved or um our to our family engagement supervisor. We might go to another level to thank you for additional support.
Yeah, uh, when we're talking about percentages, and what is what is what I stand in line is always, well, if you miss eighteen days, that's what ten percent of the school.
Ten percent, yes.
You know, that's I kind of stick to the eighteen day thing, but um.
So if you go um on this slide. Yeah, so one to.
Percentage of.
Percentage of total days that you're in school. So let's say at the beginning of the school year, ten days in. If you've missed four school days, you, that's a forty percent school absent rate, right? That's that's a worry.
There's already issue, as opposed to four across, of course, all year, not that big a deal, but for at that point, you're on a trend.
Right.
Yeah, the higher.
Yeah, so we're looking for trends.
Yep, exactly.
Thank you.
So um to tell us about what's happening in the elementary schools, we have our guest speaker, Dr. Emil. Thanks for having me tonight. I would say the elementaries are probably the most novice level when it comes to attendance teams. We're recent starters with the attendance team, our teams are smaller, um, we tend, it's the principal, the school adjustment counselor, the school psychologist, our nurse, and our secretary. Um, and we meet pretty regularly, some schools, most, a lot of schools are meeting weekly. At West Parish, we haven't just made it there yet, we're struggling to do that every other week. And, you know, we talk all the time, the five of us, um, but we are meeting regularly. The focus of our attendance meetings this year have really been those changes in policy. What does the that pyramid mean? What are we really doing for our core? How how do we roll that out? Learning Kendo was new to us also this year, like really using it all, five of us, um, and doing the attendance postcards. So we, as um the seven principals really decided that we would do monthly attendance postcards and and share with families that we were being proactive with everyone, that it wasn't just the gotcha, like, here's the the letter from the principal saying, you know, slapping your hand, you know, I still get a couple of emails back with, you know, explanations. I'm like, it's okay, we're just being proactive, thank you for letting me know, we take, you know, when you call your child in, we write all of those notes down. I just want to let you know where your child is in relation, and so can you go back a slide please? Two slides, sorry. The rating, yeah. So when the parents get the postcard, they actually see a a great, good job, you know, try harder, you know, kind of thing where their where their child is. So that October one that I sent out, I had a few parents pretty nervous. My child should never be in the orange, this doesn't feel fair. And so we talk about, you know, there have only been this many days of school, three days being sick, I totally understand. As long as, you know, we're going to send this out every month, you'll see that improve. You know, you know your child best, you know your family's plans, we want you to be in that green and blue range. It does help parents, I think, stay really on top of their family's patterns of behavior. Um, and at the elementary level, children really aren't in charge of that as as much as the parents are. Um, so we've spent a lot of time um this year really just teaching our parents about the policy. At our curriculum nights, we've talked about them in all of the group sessions. Um, we're doing the Kendo messaging, um, and then our attendance teams work with those level two and three families. And sometimes it's just communicating, what does this mean? Why, why am I getting these robo calls? So the other thing that is not really part of the attendance team, but just part of our procedure is if a parent hasn't called the school um forty-five minutes after our day starts, and they haven't called or notified us in any way, a call goes out that just keeps us knowing if their child's there or not. Sometimes our fifth graders at West Parish have their special, they sneak into their special, but never checked in with any of the other teachers, so they got marked out for the day. So it keeps everybody knowing where their child is, but parents need to know why they're getting that call and what. Well, if they're going to get the call anyway, why do they need to call us? And it's just that developing that relationship with families about the importance of school, telling us why, how we can support their child with their academics going forward. Um, so through the attendance meetings, we went over the policy, we're starting to work on identifying patterns and subgroups and seeing if there are supports that we need to provide. I know at East Gloucester last year specifically, they found a trend, and then they were like, that subgroup's now doing better than the rest of the general population. So it's really great to be able to see um when that work can have some impact. Um, and then um some of the schools are doing school-wide incentives to encourage attendance. So raffles for perfect attendance for the month. Um, Mr. Fusco would tell you about his Iron Man trophy, he's very proud of it. Um, what children's pictures in front of do that get to carry the Iron Man trophy around for the month, so um it's very, it's 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 good work.
So Assistant Principal, I mean Assistant Principal, uh, Hurley is unable to be here tonight. Oh, you had a question?
Is there a question? Um, it might pertain to all levels, but I hear more from elementary parents than elementary parent. Um, and this is something that when we were meeting with the attendance workers to come up with a policy, this came up too. So there feels like there's um a little bit of a, you know, sort of a crash between, like, kids are sick this fall, there's a lot of illness. And so I hear, you know, I would want kids to stay home when they're sick. We want them to stay home while they're sick and not come right back. Um, and I've heard some sort of like, well, got the letter, you know, like, you know, my kid's sick. Just not supposed to send my kid to school sick, and yet I'm getting the letter. Um, and sort of we identified that as like, how do we do this in a moment where kids are sick? Right. Um, so I guess it's a comment, and also sort of I feel like this is an ongoing question, like, how do we support people keeping their kids home, right? And sort of up the awareness of absence, because it feels like they're not, they're not quite the same thing. You know what I mean? I don't, I don't know if you're experiencing that.
No, I definitely experienced it. I mean, one of, you know, one of my examples I always get is if you know your child's going to get strep throat six times this winter, please don't plan to family vacations too. You know, because we, you can't have both, like, school's really important, we need you there. Please, we, of course, they're not going to be in school when they're sick. But there are other choices your family may be making when your child's already missing ten to twelve days of school.
But most people don't know if their kid's going, most families don't know.
There are some kids who have some pretty traditional typical patterns, and and if you, if your child, and I love, I love athletes, but hockey weekend wiped out every elementary school in Gloucester this year for three days. That that's a lot of, there was a lot of absenteeism in all five elementary schools, and and parents know that, and they made that choice. We just, we want them to also choose to be in school. And it's, yeah, it's a tricky thing.
I think it's like, I think we just have to make, I'm speaking as both parent and a school member, like, you have to make it something that your kids are sick, right? And so what I think what you're saying, in terms of those patterns, it's like you shouldn't do other things, right? Like, in the winter, they're going to miss time. Like, right now, I know kids are missing five to seven days of school because they are sick. Really, really.
Really, it's a long time to miss sleep.
And so I think, you know, there's just a cultural shift, I think, specifically in this town around, like, you can't go, you cannot take your kid out for a week at a time, go on vacation, it just can't happen, because the reality is, is they're going to get sick, and then they're going to miss more. And so I think that's more of the conversation that I think we need to have, is like, we need to plan for your kids to be out. Sickness is just part of being a kid, you need to plan for that, and we're understanding of it, we're not understanding of the other stuff, though.
And I would say even more than that, if you have the sicknesses and vacations, but you're open and communicative with your teacher and your school staff, that's, that's like way more than half the battle. Just really communicating well with what's going on helps us. If if the kids and the families don't know why they're out, that really makes us nervous. And and that's where we really want to have partnerships with families. And that's where we're trying to be as proactive as we can in that tier one to make sure everybody really is feeling that place, school is the place where they belong and feel safe.
Right.
And and having that partnership with families early on, it's really important.
And that's, and that's actually what I'm hearing you say is more to what Ben says every single time we have a meeting and you start with every day matters, right? Like, that, I mean, it's it's even more than the attended policy. It's sort of a global cultural policy around how much school matters, like, sick or not, like, you know? So anyway, it just feels like there's a lot of layers.
And before we move on, actually, to Omele, I just want to note, the preschool's not here, but um because attendance isn't mandatory for them, but um they are starting to reach out to families when they notice patterns. They want to develop um those those habits of mind that every day does matter. So we're hopefully going to see them coming into elementary school with a little more um you know, pattern of coming to school on a regular basis.
But are we sending out the same?
No, no, but they, but they do outreach through the, their adjustment counselor and their teachers, and they they are doing some um you know, this family engagement. Um.
Sorry.
No, I was going to go to Omele.
No, I was just thinking that that maybe when when they're train about to transition to kindergarten, there could be some reinforcement about expectations going forward.
Yeah, and that's always done in the kindergarten, like, um, orientation and information, I, I think schools really hit hard on that, and so we'll continue. Yeah. Um, so at Omele, um, Assistant Principal Hurley was unable to make it tonight, but he put together some slides for me. Um, so they need every week on a Tuesday their attendance teams. Um, and they go through a gap board that Mike Lee's put together that helps us, helps us kind of really um look at subgroups, look at grade levels, look, just look for trends, because that's what we're really looking for. Um, the guidance at Omele works in coordination with the school nurse, so if they're seeing trends, that the nurse is informing, I know that student's been, you know, sick for so long, that maybe may mean that they respond in a different way. Um, the APs, the Assistant Principals, get involved when they get into that tier two, when we're seeing trends, or students that are starting to show at risk for being chronically absent. Um, so they'll reach out and start to get involved with families as well. And then our new position family, the family outreach and community engagement coordinator gets involved when there's a more serious issue. Um, and just a side note, across the district, all um elementary through high school, um, our new family and engagement coordinator has already made over sixty home visits, working to connect with families and to um to encourage students to come into school, so that is actually very helpful. Yes.
That position, which is not a new position, it's actually, yes, it's a change mission, and it aligns the shift from punitive to proactive. And so that, we can be, had the opportunity to hire a new person, this prior person um moved on, and so um, so that's then that that aligns with the policy shift. It's their role and what they're doing, that's why we're, that's why we're having them. John Tercios' name, so I, what's our John's do, it's my home visits, it's aligned with the policy.
How are the home visits being received by families? Do we know?
Um, mixed, depending on the families.
Yeah.
Some are welcoming the engagements, some are really um partnering, partnering with the school leadership to help. Um, there's, you know, a lot of families want their kids to be in school too, and that students are not wanting to come for anxiety reasons, for all different kinds of reasons. So there's definitely um a positive part of it, and then there are some families that would rather to be left alone, and that's kind of to be expected. And um this is a shift in um, you know, the culture, the policy shift is, and to have somebody come at your door might be a little jarring, right? So we try to, you know, work with families so that's not, and it's not a punitive thing, it's how can we help? Um, how can we, what resources can we provide to, you know, have students reengage in school, so?
So they're made aware before and to visit as much as they can do.
Yeah.
Got it.
That was a good question.
Yeah.
Just uh ACE tags, what is that?
Um, well, ACE, oh, oh, ACE is uh the students.
Oh, oh, some tags a lot, I read the next line.
Tags a lot.
I know ACE, my son loves it.
Yes, yes, yeah. I was, I was struggling with that, so, yeah.
And then resource officers on uh on board, just to sort of.
Um, it's always nice to have two people go to home visits, so they often go together.
Yeah.
Um, and then ACE tags along and usually brings a smile at least, you know, getting the visit, um, and makes it a little more. Yeah. So for, to hear what's happening at the high school, we have Allison Ellis here to talk.
Hi, from my place. Appreciate it. Um, so we've done a lot of work at the high school this year with attendance teams, it's really one of our main focuses at the high school level is attendance um in really getting these kids in the door every day and boosting those numbers in the daily attendance rate that Amy was talking about. So we have a weekly attendance meeting every Monday, we meet Mondays at nine o'clock. Um, every other Monday, we bring in a subgroup that we want to focus on, and that can be kind of flexible on where we're seeing the gaps or where we're seeing the need. So some of the subgroups that we have brought in so far this year is our subgroup for our EL students. So we have a um EL liaison, Vanessa Lindberg, who's wonderful, who works directly with the families, we have a program leader for that department, we bring those people in to have those conversations. Special education, we work with um Lisa Williams and Megan Baldassano, who are heads of special education here, we'll bring them in, we'll bring in other various liaisons to help have conversations with students and to look at the data with us. Um, we have a meeting that's separate for our gap alternative program. Um, we've had meetings for our five oh four students, freshman class, and then we've also looked at the term one failure list in the specific attendance meeting to see the correlation between the students that didn't pass their classes term one and those daily attendance rates. So we, although we meet every single Monday, every other Monday, we really dive into a different group and see the need and invite in other people on the team to join the team. So that's been a really effective practice, and that's something that's different than last year. Last year, we did try to meet weekly, sometimes didn't happen every week, um, but we didn't bring in those subgroups, so that's been a shift, which has been really nice and has kind of you know, put the team at ease, so it's not like attendance is just on this one group of people, because it's really about the school community and how we bring in others and this, within our school staff to help, you know, help with this. Um, our outreach is personalized to better connect with families, so a lot of what we're doing is individual calls, and that can be coming from the trusted adult that's familiar with the student. So if that student has a great relationship with their guidance counselor, that attendance meeting, we have a list that's going to that counselor, hey, can you check in with these guys and report back to us? If it's the adjustment counselor, that's great, who, whatever, whatever staff member, whether it's a teacher, the school nurse in a lot of places, the assistant principal in some cases, whoever has that best relationship with the family or the student, we're really having them make those individual calls and report back to the attendance team just to make it easier on the families, more inviting. Um, and we are, we're getting a good, good feedback from that as well. So it's not just that attendance person calling, hey, I'm the attendance person from Gloucester High School, hey, this is the person that's working with your child, I know you're the best, what's going on? What can we do to help you? Um, as we were just talking about home visits with John Tercios, that has been really successful. Um, I don't know the data, but I'm guessing a lot of those sixty visits were high school students, because that happens quite a bit. Um, we always send two people, so it's typically John, our attendant supervisor, and one of the counselors. Um, sometimes it's a counselor and the assistant principal, officer of school, our school resource. Sometimes it's a counselor and the assistant principal, officer of school, our school resource officer also gets involved with that sometimes. We don't have the dog, but a lot of kids like Mike, so he's, he's a friendly face too, um. But we always go with two people also, so it just can be a variation of again, who knows the student the best. Uh, with one phrase that we really try to emphasize is pull factors rather than push factors. So what's that thing at school that's gonna get the kid to come in? Are they connected to the basketball team? Are they part of the vocational program? Do they love the STEM program? What is it that's gonna get the kid in the door? And how do we utilize that, rather than a push factor of, hey, it's the attendance person calling, why aren't you here? Or hey, you gotta come do detention after school, because you weren't here these days, we don't want to do that, we want to pull you in with what we have going on, so that's a phrase that we. Um, really try to utilize pull factors rather than push. At the start of every attendance meeting, regardless, if it, if it's a whole team meeting or a subgroup meeting, we look at the data. So I think Amy has the slide.
Yeah.
Coming up, but you'll see the data dashboard that Mike and me has created. We spend the first fifteen to twenty minutes looking at the data and taking notes on that before we get into individual student conversation. So we can pick what subgroup we want to focus on next, and we can see what's happening um, by grade level, it's a really nice layout that he has, um, it's really helpful. And the team includes both assistant principals, so myself and Chris Cobb's. Um, Laura Carlson, who's our head of guidance, uh, Amy Cam is on our team, she comes every week. We have one rotating adjustment counselor, so we have four different counselors here, they rotate through which one, which meeting they come to. Um, and that stays the same for our student support team, which meets on Tuesdays, so it's the same adjustment counselor Monday that comes on Tuesdays. Which is really nice, schedule wise and helps build good communication in the school. Monica Madruga is our adjustment counselor intern and guidance intern, and she's really helpful with all the data. So shout out to her, she's been awesome this year helping out with their attendance team. And um, plus the additional staff that we bring in for each subgroup, so it can be, you know, various people, but those people at the bottom are always at every meeting.
So now, yeah.
You know, I just have a question about, um, maybe this is for you, uh. The um, overall, like, like big picture, like patterns, say, like, if you look at a family, they might have an elementary student, a middle school student, a high school student. We seen any kind of, are we able to like, capture that, like, any, any kind of trends, are there social families that are having like. Same problem with all their students that have multiple students throughout the district?
Right, so we want, I mean, think, we.
Is there a way of looking at that?
Yeah, right, so you may have three attendance teams, you've got three teams, you've got preschool, right? Are, those intensity at this point have any capacity to, or practice of connecting the dots?
Yeah.
Around, that could be around learning, that could be around attendance, that could be around other issues as well, safety issues. Um, I would say not. Oh, yeah, right, I think that's right, there, oh, wait, can you explain?
The um, family outreach, he works with all students, all grade levels, right? So he's working with a student at the high school and having trouble getting, uh, you know, trying, working to get that student to come into school. And then all of a sudden, you know, veterans calls up and says, and he'll know it's the same family, so he, he would be able to see those trends.
Yeah, I just don't, don't let that to be missed, like, maybe we'd be gathering the same family, different students in their family.
Yeah, but we would see the trend, and then, um, there's also a district attendance team that meets not as frequently. Um, but that could be brought up there as well.
So I think with John, it needs to be on a severe basis, that link it.
Right.
If it's sort of a, like a tier two sort of support, we may not link it between the schools.
Yeah.
Um, but we, but because we're operating on a, you know, individual student basis, right? Um, but I think that's something, you know, that's something to look, look for as we're having, maybe it's true.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it's a problem, I don't know if we can tell if it's a problem, like, if, if it is, right, you know.
We do have a way of looking at that too, so when we look at a student individually in our system, it will tell us the siblings. And so oftentimes, we're like, oh, this kid has a chronic absenteeism issue, let me call over to West Parish and check it, and that does happen. I've been in, you know, meetings with West Parish and Omele, and it really, it covers the whole gap.
I was going to say, also, our clinical staff meet on Mondays vertically through Zoom, and they talk about. The families they're supporting vertically, and then they can, can do wraparound services that way, so often if they're having other issues, it might. Involve attend, attendance also.
So my question along those lines is, um, do we still file CRAs at the attendance and it's extreme? Because I've learned sitting in juvenile court that sometimes it's not necessary, the kids not going to school, but the parents not getting the kids to school, and that's where it addresses those issues more.
Extreme cases, we, we do, yes, um, they're not always as, they're, they're not as effective as, as creating a pull factor.
Oh, absolutely.
You know what, it's, it's more. It's, you get more lax about by giving, getting them, wanting, making them want it.
Yeah.
So.
I just wanted, I was just.
Um, it's not off the table, it's not, it's definitely not the go-to though. I, I mean, I think what I found positive this year is it was like, do this and do this, and then think about filing a fifty-one A. Well, any trust you've built with the family sometimes gets fractured in that process too, so it's, it's. Really being able to say we're really focused on this, especially in this time when people are still really sick, right? Then lots of things are happening, it's RSV, flu season, strep throat, everything you can think of has happened this fall, and so. You know, it, it just is the way it is, so I think keeping that open line of communication open and talking. So to take a look at some of the numbers, oh, throughout the years, um, if we look back from twenty eighteen through now. I don't want to get too excited about this year's data yet, we haven't hit January, February, where the, you know. Last year, we really had a lot of absences, right? But um, tentatively, we are looking like we are making some progress, right? We're, we're, we look like we're coming out of the, the um, lower numbers. However, I'm gonna repeat that we do, we have not hit January, February, and that was our hardest months, those were our hardest months last year. Um, and, okay, so um, this is just our attendance rate by school. Um, high school, we are having the most um, difficulty with attendance, that's always been kind of typical. Um, and um, I'm very hopeful as seeing how much, how integrated their approach is, and hopefully we will see some progress. Not probably, you know, right away, but also a couple of years, we're gonna bring this back up. Um, and then this is by grade level, and, well, you know, our high school was having the most trouble, and our high school grade levels are having the most. Um, uh, the lowest attendance, but um, this is good because they are looking at this, they're targeting why it is, and they're coming up with interventions. And I believe the next one is the dashboard that Alison alluded to.
I just mentioned one of the, or else, you get to a tenth graders now, or can I just tell that story about the, we get new to the tenth graders?
Oh, from last year and this year?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, one of the things that came up in looking at the data last year, um. Was the tenth graders were the most fluent, most, you know, the most high, highest chronic absenteeism rate. And we didn't really know why, you know, we kind of thought coming out of COVID last year, that tenth grader, that tenth grade population didn't have a ninth grade year. A lot of them were remote, they were kind of like freshmen again, so we understood that. This year, we're looking at it again, and tenth grade still low. So that is definitely an, a focus area that we need to kind of spotlight, um, I was just in a meeting. With our head of special education the other day, and we're, we're talking about that, how can we fix that, and how do we utilize what resources we have to bolster that tenth grade population? Is it because they're kind of like the middle child and they get lost in the shuffle? I don't know, but it's interesting that it wasn't just that cohort of kids, but it's like. Traveling with them, so it's the, you know, current tenth graders again this year, there were ninth graders last year, that are more struggling.
Maybe it's just coincidence. Maybe unrelated, but I know we've talked about, no. Um, my thought is, I know at the high school, it's been, um, you know, sometimes it comes up that kids can't get into the electives. Because they fill up. And I'm wondering if you, over time, look at that. You know, I, I know sometimes as long as there's like a class a kid loves, or an activity they love, the whole. They're gonna, they're gonna be there for that, right? And so, and I know some years are so much on requirements, and then you kind of get into some of the more interesting things, but I'd be curious if. If there's, you know, a way to ask.
Yeah.
There, what class, you know, sent you down the road, I mean, just as a, a way to.
So we do have those student. Right, we have those student names that are based on this information that we get. We have those students that are struggling the most with attendance, and we have it from last year too, so it may be like targeted surveying or targeted outreach and conversations, like what is. What's the barrier there?
The commonality.
Right, uh, it's just interesting that that is similar to last year.
So the data dashboard is alive, you can click on it, this is just a screenshot of it, but this is, it shows you the tiers, so the green. Those are our tier one students, right? Those are the students that are getting the basic uh, encouragement incentives to come to school. Um, yellow, you know, we get more severe as you get up to red. Um, this shows by grade level, um, it showed, you can see again that tenth grade is, you know, has that lowest number in the green. Ninth grade is second. Um, and it's, this is some of the information or example of what an, um. An attendance team would see, and they would be able to click on the red and see who those students are. The data dashboard, they can also run a report to, to look at all EL students, or all females, or all. You know, special education, all different categories, just to look for trends, um, for, to see where they can give out. Yes.
Telen, you had mentioned that. Somewhere it is captured why someone's absent.
So if a parent calls, we just change it so they don't get that robocall from just plain absent to absent parent called.
Okay.
And, and then there's a notes comment, so if we're looking for patterns, if it's just all absence, it means the parent. Typically hasn't called, sometimes if they don't give a, something of mention.
Yeah.
We don't write anything, but typically we try to write something, and it's, you know. Especially as you look at consecutive days' absence, like is it just consecutive days' absence, or are they calling, do we know there's a chronic something going on?
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering, this is such a cool. Data, uh, a way to sort of capture what's going on, it would be so helpful for us to know, I'm assuming the schools to know, like, what. Why are people absent? Like, what is the data there, right? Like, is it mostly because they're sick? Is it mostly because of vacations, mostly because of school avoidance, it like. I, I think, you know, we're talking about absenteeism as one thing, we're not really breaking it down. I'm sure you guys are having those conversations on individual levels, but for us, it would be so helpful to see what's happening. And a way for us to communicate to the community, like, this is what we see is happening in our schools. I, I don't know if there's a way to capture that, but I would love to see it.
Yeah, that's the work that we're trying to start to do with our attendance team this year, like, we haven't really had that time. To do the analysis, which is why that weekly work is important.
Yeah.
Uh, but to be able to look, you know, even by trimester. What's the trend of absences, like, is it sickness is the.
And so eventually, that's sort of the end. And could it maybe present to us?
Um, so this is just the comparison on the left, our non-EL students versus EL, so just to show how you can see. Um, the difference and find trends, and then you can go to the next one, and it's a similar um, breakdown for special education students on the right. Um, something hopeful is the difference isn't as extreme as you would think, so I, you know, ninety-three and. Re- roughly ninety, we would like them to be equal, but the difference isn't as scary as some other data might be. Um, okay.
But you do see differences in, in, in green and red.
Yes.
That's one of the things that's helpful about disaggreging, first of all, the groups, but also looking beyond just a ten string.
Right.
The ten string is a very blunt object, right? So, but, and, and, and looking at it means that we can, you know, dig, dig into it more deeply, or team scan, I should say. And then identify, and work, and I think ultimately it gets down to the folks who are hearing this, like. We're committed for students and families, you know, but you only do that through, you know, good use of data, so.
So, the takeaways are that we're in process, basically, we need to communicate the new um, approach. Our attendance teams are in place at each school, um, they are at different levels of, you know, comfort, they're just getting off the ground at some elementary schools. They're in year two for high school, and we're kind of everywhere in the middle, um, in other schools. So we're focusing on daily attendance, weekly attendance meetings are happening, about individuals, about groups, um. Parent outreach, calls, emails, letters, the um, all kinds of the KBO, every resource we can have. Um, we are planning uh, parent and student education programs to try to, you know, improve. Just the culture of every day does matter, it's important to come to school. Um, and we are, and now, you know, analyzing absence versus failing rates at the high school. And we're doing some student surveys, what, you know, why are you absent, or what, like, don't you want to come, those kind of things, what's your pull factor? Um, so we're doing the work, we're hopeful that we're gonna start to see some, um. Improvement here.
So, one of the things I was thinking, as, you know, you get more and more data, particularly. As I start seeing middle and high school, where it seems people are being more independent, or something's not as good as elementary. Is if there's messaging early, you know, early in the school year to parents about. That link between attendance and, um, and how their grades are. Because, you know, it's one thing to say, you know, if you're absent for three or four percent of the school year. Here's the average grade, if you're absent twelve percent, it means, because as you say, I mean, eight, ten percent. Is a lot of days, that's eighteen, you know, that's almost four weeks, and so if a parent could. Grasp that, if I take my kid out for five days and then they're gonna be sick. What does that do in terms of pressure on them to either call behind or just not get the material? That they need to have to be successful. Um, I just think sometimes those kinds of messages may resonate and stick with somebody, I remember when. My sons were little, the big issue was tardiness and showing up, and the message was, imagine your. Five or six-year-old walking into class eight minutes late, when everybody's settled down.
Yeah.
And how do you think they feel? You know, to kind of appeal to the parent's sense of an emotional connection as to why it's important to your child. Um, and the burden it puts on them, because to, obviously, tardiness is due to parents when you're in elementary school, right? Um, so anyway, just to keep things in mind on how to make things, you know, emotional, real, um, just making the connection. You know, every day matters is a great for many, you know, encompasses it all. Um, and I just think some of those examples that prove that. Would, would be, if you know, provided, we know.
You almost took the words out of my mouth, my first question is for Telen and Alison, do you think that this, the, the new policy, the new. Way we're handling the tendences is a positive to, I mean, it seemed like you both were pretty positive.
Yeah, I mean, I think, like, like Laura said before, parents had the, oh, I got the letter. And it wasn't a motivator to really change anything.
Yeah.
I think it's, we're in the first year of proactively telling people every month, so it's still new, it feels still kind of like the letter. But I think as they see it, and as they see their child's trend line improving. It will feel better to them and be like, okay, I, I do have some control of this, and I think that for kids and parents alike, they want to know what they have control of. So I think that that is, I think it's helpful, I think, um, having a more of a team approach. Um, and really pulling in teachers and whoever that same person is for students is really helpful. Um, that's kind of been our focus is, okay, teachers usually ask me, or the adjustment counselor, or the secretary. You know, why is this child, child out, and we've been, why don't you reach out and say we really miss them, are they okay? Is there anything that we can do to support you? So really, getting the whole team, including classroom teachers, involved in that communication. Is been part of the work this fall.
You feel pretty strongly about it, Ellen?
I do, I think just partnership and communication are key, at least for the high school, that's kind of what we're focusing on, and how can we. Echo that throughout the whole building, because we're, it's different than elementary school, very big building, lots of different programs, lots of different staff members. So how can we model that partnership and communication coming from the attendance office and then spreading throughout the building? And how do we get the kids in with the different pull factors that we have?
Uh, one of the things that I wrote down, I wrote down a whole page of notes here, I won't bore you with all of them. Um, the purpose of the robocall is just to let parents know, hey, what is, what is the robocall?
It's, so it's two parts, it's just to say your child's been marked out today.
Yeah.
Which allows them to say, oh. Well, no, I dropped them off right at nine, maybe they slipped into class, it's, it's to make sure that what we've marked for attendance is actually what the parent thinks, so we.
Closing the loop.
Closing the loop, absolutely, and then it also prompts parents, oh, right, I was supposed to call them and tell them this is what's going on, so they'll call the nurse. Or they'll call the secretary and say we're at the orthodontist, we'll be in in an hour, there's a lot of those types of calls.
At some point, I'd love to see the robocall go by the wayside, I mean, we're trying to, trying to personalize the whole thing and. Make it relationship-based. Hey, just noticed, little Bobby's not here today. Hey, just noticed, little Bobby's not here today.
Right.
I think it's a really important safety.
Yeah.
Piece for, to be a robocall because you can't guarantee that someone's going to be able to quickly call people. And if for some reason a kid doesn't get off the bus, that, that loop really needs to be closed very, very quickly.
And it only goes to who, who has not called in.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's where I see it as like being extremely important.
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
There's some sort of discrepancy.
Yeah, totally understand that.
Yeah.
To Kathy's point, reinforce the message of, of school matters, like, I don't think we, I, I talk about myself, doesn't put enough job about that, you know, here in Gloucestershire. Hey, school matters. It's important that you're there. I was actually thinking, someone mentioned anxiety that went then or something, but, you know, think about that. All of a sudden, kids are like, what if the kids are the ones that are taking that message home? Hey, school matters, mom, dad, you know? Art is nice, but school matters to me. And that, you know, does that fill a kid with any type of, you know, all of a sudden, hey, it's important to them that they get to school and just for them to hear that message. And, um, so I, I just think we have to do whatever we can. I think for me, it's the per- most pertinent issue is you can't hit a baseball or you go to bed and you can't learn unless you go to bush again, unless you sit in class and, uh, the work that Greg Bach and Amy and or Laura and the programs committee has done on this attendance workers thing is, could really set us up down the road for a more successful overall school attendance thing. I, I was just took one number off the slide and it was thirty percent of the special ed students are in the severe and, you know, worried category. Well, that's a lot of kids. You know, totally willing to pat us ups on the back for the new policy, but I'm also saying that's a lot of kids and, um, we need to figure out how to, how to improve that. I think these are the steps that are doing, so. My commentary.
This just plays out this actually, cause when, when we were in this process, the way that, and it may have gotten lost since Greg's not here. But the way they started was with some incredible data about if you lose, if you miss this many days of school in kindergarten, if you lose this many days of school and, and they have, there were arrows going down, you lose this level of reading, you lose, and it was really stunning. And on the elementary level, and I, you know, it's not as relevant once you get to high school, but I was stunned. Uh, you know, because I think there is a perception and I think it becomes a really useful, they've dropped the data, I don't know, I'm going to do this with them now. But they have these beautiful slides with graphics that show you what missing that five days means for your kindergarten. Um, what it means at a first, because I think there's perception. I know that I, that, oh, they're little, that, that these days they can miss now. So I just would say we should go back to some of that work because remember those graphic, they were so dramatic and, and unexpected. And I think as we educate parents into why we're doing this, I think that would be a really good first step.
Watch me, watch me on social media.
Just the last thing I'll say is, Bill, I appreciate, as always, that our team, helping the forum folks, you know, the, not only the intention, but the intent with, with the way that we listen and, and your questions and you're seeking more understanding. So just to, just to wrap up, um, uh, what if with all the proactive and all the outreach and all the clarity, more messaging obviously increases the need to happen. Um, that's all going to have a positive impact. And I'll also go back to what Allison said, I'll pull back. Kids will have a reason to come to school, whether it's their friends or specials are learning in classroom. You know, and especially middle and high school, then we'll always be, you know, sort of on the fringes. You know, it, it has to be that what we're doing, what our staff and our teachers and our colleagues are doing in school is, is one of the major things pulling kids in. You know, and then, and, and then also tied to that is that they want to be there with their friends, it's the same place that I'd be in. Like, that's the stuff that ultimately, that combined with good practices, good data analysis, good, things to do is what, you know, creates, um, just kids want to be there, like you said, so it's, it's, it's also about our practice very much.
Well, thank you very much.
Uh, well, next and last, uh, item for me is are my slight goals for the, for the year. So let me show you a couple of things. You, you have the revised version in your packets. Um, I'm going to first show you where we were, which is this, which was, um, only in, in, in large just a little bit. Uh, this was the first draft. I can keep scrolling for about eleven pages to see what it was, okay? But I'll stop now. Um, and thankfully, Kathy Clancy, at the end of her conversation, said, um, ooh, maybe you should check with some other people about it. She did it very nicely. Okay, um, I listened intelligently, I listened. Um, and now we have, it's, it's a page. Which really what I did was, um, with, I, I actually tried, just to explain what, what happened is, is what I was trying to do is trying to be not responsible, of course, and, and I am responsible for, you know, the big picture here, but, but, uh, take our plan for improvement and in each section of it, be responsible for, put as my goals, the work that our other leaders at schools and departments are doing. And that was, uh, wasn't very wise of me to put it that way, but trying to. Um, instead I took the first goal, just really leading for the long term and it's, it's, it's the work that I'm really responsible for in terms of, of, um, you know, my main efforts. And so just to dig into that one, that's a few different areas. And so I'll just describe them, uh, quickly. Leading for the long term, that's about our, you know, that, that we're not a reactive place, but we're actually building such structured systems, approaches, budgets that, um, that allow us to, uh, do improve over time or every year over, over the long haul. And that's the work that I do with principals and department head leaders, how I support them to achieve their goals. So you'll see that sort of, um, and how do I, uh, you know, you'll see that in goal one there. Goal two is really about the, 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 the specific structure or structure and systems that are, um, illustrated or, you know, with the plan of program improvement. So the work to complete that, finalize that, the ongoing work to nail it down in terms of liberals timelines. Then the other, or the last piece with the number two there is making sure that's integrated into things like, um, supervision of principals and department heads, okay? Support of them, um, and then also budget development, school group planning. So it's, it's, it's that, that the three-year plan is not only operational, I mean, not, don't, don't exist, but it's operational. I mean, operations with too many of our systems and many of our, our, which are our leaders. And then the next one, three is just the essential piece of each veteran's school and my role in that. Um, to make sure that everything from, you know, as a coach of the school building committee, uh, making good decisions and, and leading that effort. Uh, but also getting involved in so many pieces around furniture and furnishings and things to do with that for grid or, or, um, you know, um, um, transition to the school and making sure that I'm not only supporting, but also supervising the leaders who are doing that, uh, to good effect. Another specific example of the, of a task within that goal is what we've already done is, um, well, two things, one, naming process, but also, um, get approval for the school attendance and then Gary goes out. That's a, it's a crucial piece of building to building, emerging to schools that impacts across the whole district. Um, the, the last two are more about the operational facility, it's sort of capital planning, obviously the long-term health and sustainability of our school system, um, as a, a, a large piece of that are facilities. Um, and that's a place that, um, you know, uh, I essentially oversee, work with Gary and need to con- continue to lead for the long term in that area as well. You see some of the pieces that we've already, you're working on and put in place, the modular classrooms, playgrounds, um, the long-term planning, which of course, um, is, is done in conjunction with our school leaders, um, as well as IT and also DPW. Um, and then obviously the important piece of the plan, repairing, replacing fifty-year-old, fifty-year-old buildings, fifty-year-old, fifty-year-old windows that are mailing. And the last piece, in terms of operations, um, a few, few areas here, uh, planning and financial management, um, particularly in sort of the changing environment around school funding and school finances, whether that's ESER or that's other opportunities we have or just shifts in terms of the economy. Make sure we're doing that well year by year and long term. Um, I think, and I think a lot of super heads and school folk would agree that probably one of the most important shifts and challenges we're facing in the, in the, in the school, school business is staffing. That's, that's going to continue to be a, a challenge. And so, you know, supporting the HR department, one, to have that as a, as a real department, you know, um, um, sort of functioning as a team to support our schools and our departments, but also particularly, um, supporting them to focus on moving beyond posting and hoping. You know, post positions and I hope people show up. We've got to be more strategic about, um, our outreach, our recruitment, our onboarding, um, and then retention. Um, how do we draw people here? Um, we've got some good luck, but it's going to get more and more challenging. That's, you know, it's variety roles, you know, everything from uh, bus drivers, you know, ESP, yeah, ESPs, specifications staff. Um, and so working with human resources will be a priority this year in terms of helping them um, improve systems and support of outreach improvement priority. Um, and then a couple of other places, obviously safety and security will always be top priority and, and that's a, an area. Remember the threat assessment, we're really been working on, um, and helping work with A and T and the lead. Um, that's cyber threats and also, um, uh, other types of threats. Um, and the last piece, of course, always communication to make sure that we're, um, we are telling the great story of our work in our schools and doing a better job of that, but also making sure that our, um, communication reinforces our priorities, our progress that we have. I was saying to Amy here a second ago, boy, you know, schools because of the importance of our work, um, and the complexity of it and the impact we, we have, or the, the role we play in family's lives. Um, if being a marketing communications outfit is actually makes so much sense. None of us are actually positioned to do that. Well, we're a little better positioned thanks to your leadership. Um, and it can do better job, but, but it just does take so much education of the public um, about what we're trying to do and also how we're doing it, um, that really is a, you know, communications and outreach is such a gigantic, uh, part of every business's operations. It's, it's there, it's our lifeblood in many ways. Um, I think for us, it's, it's, it's not our lifeblood, but it's something that, um, everyone's a better job on. So that's obviously continues to be a big priority for me, for this stuff. So those are the goals. You've seen them in different iterations. You've seen these same ones last time, um, again, zero this week in terms of just where I was zeroing on and just wanted to, to your consideration. Crash approval.
Anybody have any questions? Nice one. Sure. I like these goals. Right in the comment and it's not a criticism, it's a warning. So it, it just appears it's, it's been changed your evaluation till June. To do in June instead of in December. That we're only doing a half year evaluation as opposed to a full year evaluation. So I would just say, and I know there's been a lot going on and I'm not, like I said, this isn't a criticism, but I would just hope that, um, when we do the goals again, it's more the July, August timeline so that we have the full year to evaluate as opposed to just a couple of months and next thing you know, we're evaluating on something we got tonight.
Yeah, so I, so probably I agree entirely.
So like I said, not a criticism. I know we've been inundated with everything since the pandemic, but just simply mindful of that. It's supposed to be a year-long process, not a half year.
But let me, so to, to, to turn the normal, normalization of a lot of procedures, this being one of them, this needs to happen in the summer time, totally agree with you, okay? But I do want to point out that you'll still evaluate me on performance from June, from July one to June thirtieth. Cause as you can see in some of these things we've already done.
Right.
So.
And some goals are longer than a year.
Oh, yeah, absolutely right. So, so while I it is problematic to get them, they're, it's, it's December, I, I totally agree with that. Um, I do need to be looking at, I want you looking at the body of work from July one, twenty twenty-two to, twenty, twenty-three, and, and that's why some of the things you see here are already like, I've done that, you know? Um, cause I like to get credit for those things too. Same, um, but thank you.
But just mindful that if we can.
Yeah, no, we will, no, next, next summer. Yeah, it'll, it'll, this is the next summer.
Four big things we did in September.
Sounds like I'm some party.
Big things, yeah. Like I said, not a criticism.
No, we'll, yeah, we'll, we'll be there.
Just to detail, did you, did you say you sent this to us this week? That I didn't fancy this. It came out with, um.
It shouldn't have been the packet.
Yeah, no, it certainly wasn't the packet, which came out today, but I thought you said.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I thought the packing yesterday. I mean, I, yeah, yesterday.
Okay, I just want to make sure I hadn't missed something.
Yeah.
Good, yeah, I saw.
If anyone wants to make a motion to approve the goals for the superintendent for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Second. Okay, any discussion? Yeah. Um, Maria Rolclapo, please.
Jefferson Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Vino.
Yes.
And his friend.
Yes.
Mayam Verder.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
And Ms. Risen.
Yes. Okay, I'm actually carrying you in this. Okay, so that concludes the deliberations on education issue. Um, there have been no set committee meetings since our last school committee meeting. Um, we've already taken care of the first case of action. The next one is, um, uh, circle of continuing to use two Blackburn Drive, um, for the foreseeable future.
Yes, just to give you a summary, so, uh, you've been looking at that, that space and the usefulness of that space. It can be very useful for lots of reasons. Um, the lease ends, uh, at the end of the school year. And so we see that it's very valuable in lots of ways. Um, and what would benefit, um, both the schools and I think, um, perhaps the administration to give a clearer signal from the committee that we're committed to that building. Um, and then that allows the city to continue, uh, and work on how to secure the use of that building. Um, which is that they would, they would go into discussions with the owner on that. On like sending release or other options.
Okay. So I guess I'll start a motion so that we can, um, have discussion. Um, I move that we send a request to the mayor um, to secure the continued use of two Blackburn Drive office for the foreseeable future. Second. All right, discussion. I guess I'll say I'm going to support the motion. I know it's been a really, um, positive poem for the preschool. Um, from having been in a place that was not conducive to be a preschool for a very long time. Um, I just see the vibrancy of serving those kids and families of, um, at two Blackburn. Think the transportation works pretty good up there, even though it's straight from it would pick up with the drive off, but, um, there's certainly some a lot of joy and happiness, um, up at that building by both staff and um, and the students, um. And obviously we have their administrative offices there as well. So we need a home. We've got a home, makes sense to continue using home this year.
I wasn't familiar with the old uh, outfit. In like returning back to Gloucestershire. You know, I do have a question about the outdoor facilities. I've only casually seen like the, the play area outside. Yeah, that's adequate or is there something else?
No. No, um, uh, so the question has been whether we can make a long-term commitment to the building. Um, if not having that, meaning, you know, at least was ending.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we've been hesitant to bring a dollar in there to upgrade that.
Sure.
Uh, we made some, you know, preschool.
But it's ours.
Yeah, yeah, definitely aware of it, you know, just like we do, um, but really need to understand it for, uh, you know, make that commitment to it long-term, at least, you know, the, the next term, in order to really, um, address those improvements such as the playground.
Yeah.
Yeah, awesome.
Listen, I was just gonna say, I'm going to support this motion as well. Um, we don't, the, the building is working for us and the staff seems to be comfortable and the children and the families are comfortable. Um, I don't know that we have an alternative at this time, so I would just strongly encourage the administration to consider um, keeping the stability in the community right now and, uh, um, putting us in a position to have to make changes and start conversations that could upset families. So I think um, what we have is working. We're making the best of it. And, uh, just encouraged to the administration to support and put this forward as well.
Okay.
No, I think it's, if anybody else was watching, it's, it's, there is no alternative.
Right.
I mean, eventually Beeman and Club discussions will, will come up and one or both of those buildings played their role. For the meantime, this is working.
For the meantime, this is working, we're we're currently paying rent. You can buy it, and it's a wash, but it, there's nowhere else to go with the law. So I think that, uh, you know, we will test one in the council, make the right decisions. Encourage them to make a decision that we think is right.
Okay, Rolco, please.
Now, President Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Ms. Minio.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mia Burger.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
And Ms. Wees.
Yes. Good question, passes unanimously. Um, discussion, um, other communication, all the new business, um, the update on East Veterans Elementary.
So, uh, we had Bill and Katie last week, um, that presentation's on the website. Um, what's happening in those, I mean, it's once a month this point, but they're very helpful in terms of the uh, sharing a few months ago, really got a good system down of updates. And so those presentations are quite good, um, in terms of where we are, again, on budget, on schedule. Um, we search their windows in gym, and some of them are installed, you see those, cool. Um, but, uh, no, and then we're working on things like furniture, furnishings. I defer to Matt, if you ever, you want me to. Um, we're also keeping the budget in line, the furniture budget is more than, more than anticipated. Um, but the, um, but that's all fitting within the budget, it's other choice we're making, like, grab some savings on technology, think we don't necessarily need I think, you know, thought we might need, but don't, or there are cost savings there. Um, so that's, that continues to move forward in terms of furniture. Um, that process moved up a little bit than it sooner than typically is because of just, um, timeframes in terms of supply chain, this sort of thing. But it's on schedule and on track. Um, another area that we, that's a, that the school building committee considered and voted on was, um, making sure that there was a, uh, uh, we installed, uh, for Peter to make sure cell phone service throughout the building was effective. Um, one of the, so cell phone service in Gloucester is, as we know.
Correct.
Correct, thank you. Um, intermittent, um, and the dead, the dead zones. And they've been looking and then you and testing out the cell service with the building as it, as it building it. Um, it has the, it could, that building on the way is tighter and tighter, cell, cell service is degrading. Partly for that, they, uh, the team explained is that, um, you know, new building technologies are, um, any building that becomes tighter and tighter, um, including the type of glasses they use in modern buildings, uh, degrade cell signals. And so, um, so the the strengths and benefits of green technology or more, you know, more sustainable, or more, sorry, more environment, energy efficient materials can reduce cell service, okay? So like we did at, um, West Parish, we'll also put in us, uh, for Peter in the building. Um, time due is now, it's less expensive now that it is, um, you know, six, eight, two months from now, two years from now. Um, but in terms of just use of the building, um, whether that's during the school day, um, or staff or that is, um, uh, after school or weekends where the community members using it. The expectation is people, if you think the community members onboarded a family, uh, at a public event. Um, so we need to, uh, do that to get the business. And it is a hundred thousand dollars, um, approximately to, um, to install. But, um, but our our project, um, you know, managers, um, uh, are clear that in terms of the contingencies that are still available and just savings, it's a very good manager, we've had, they've added the budget, we had a budget, allows us to do it, so. This will do. I made that decision.
Safety issue too.
Yeah, it's safety, it's, yeah, yeah, it's safety and it's a way to go a lot, right? Not having it. Madly, like, like in some buildings in Boston, so.
Oh.
But those are some of the highlights.
Nice, and I'll, um, just, uh, say that continues to be expected to be, that at the, um, substantial completion date, which is in early June. Um, that means there could be an occupancy, that doesn't mean everything is done, there's punch lists, and there's things acted out, but that's substantial completion. They also, you know, along with every other, um, sector of the economy have labor challenges, which have to put a little bit of, um, delay, but they are making it up over time. They project that they'll still stay on time, I think they say there may be five days. You know, in the ideal world, sort of managing this two-year project and can say, well, we're kind of five days behind, so that's not so bad. Um, but we have an early June, um, targeting. Um, also, the project manager's been submitting and working with the MSBA, get all the invoices submitted. Um, I think there's like thirty million dollars that we put out so far. So once all that gets cleared up in the next month or two, there'll be a total of approximately fifteen million dollars back to the city, which will be nice for cash flow, city side. Um, yeah, so I think that's and I highly recommend you watch the drone, because there's another great drone video um, that we'll have a link on the project website, because it's just really kind of cool to see. Seeing the perspective from us. The first ID. Okay.
We'll put the, we'll put the drone video on the website, you can see it, it's also simulated too.
Great. They're alternating drone one month, internal video the next, so. Uh, okay, any other new, any new business from anybody? Um, this is our only meeting in the month of December. We do not have one on December second. Twenty-first, I think it is, I think you're right, I think it's the twenty-first. Um, so we do have B and A, what'd you say?
Or the twenty-eighth.
Or the twenty, or the twenty.
Yeah, next week.
Yeah, yeah, um, not a long one, though. So, anyway, holidays, I have a holiday. I'm going, we've done a lot of good work, so, uh, hopefully everybody enjoys the in the tour, right? Okay, um, we have motion to adjourn, so, again.
Jefferson Clancy.
Yes, Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mia Burger.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
And Ms. Wees.
Yes. Okay, and good night, everybody, who was in attendance, thank you for being with us.